Good morning, everybody. I'll call this meeting the Community Emergency Services Committee to order. Mr. Johnson, will you give us invocation, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Be with me. Well, we thank you for this day you've given us and thank you for the opportunities that you've set before us. We come to you thankful that we live in a community such as Columbia County, Lord, and the blessings that you provide on us every day. We're also thankful for this board and the service that they provide for our community, Lord, and our employees that care so much about it. But we just pray that you'll just continue to bless us, Lord, that we be good stewards of the things that you've entrusted us with. Just be with us as we go forward today and give us where we fail you. I pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, who is the foundation, God, is the law, and justice for all.
We'll establish we have all three commissioners here. Gentlemen, we have the minutes of the previous meeting. If you had a chance to examine them, take a motion to approve them.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'm moved. Mr. Johnson, everything?
No changes to the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any presentations this morning?
No, sir.
And in consent, we will go with our new business, Community Services?
Yes, sir. This is approval to renew the Georgia Glamping contract. We entered into a contract with them in April. They actually didn't start operate, I mean, I'm sorry, in October. They didn't start operation until April. So far, seen great results from that. So we're asking to approve a renewal of that contract.
Any numbers, Dennis? I'm just interested in how many people are actually renting it and doing it? Is it?
Yeah, it's been booked every weekend since they've been open.
Right, excellent.
They're operating at about 90%.
Very cool.
There. And if this continues to be, do we have sites available?
We actually met with them last week. They're already asking to expand. So we're looking for ways to provide them the space they need without taking away from our current inventory.
All right. Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
The next one is the nutritional services agreement with the jail. This is basically, we get our meals from them to provide our home-delivered meals program and then our onsite meals for seniors attending the senior center. So we're asking to renew that contract, will not exceed $138,050 for the year.
Move to consent.
Second.
Yeah, I wouldn't comment. This is, this program goes unnoticed by most people, but it's enormously generous in the part of the county. And when I visit the senior center, those people are very happy. They gather, they're connected. And so thanks to the people that ministry and the sheriff. I'm moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. Next is library services agreement. The annual funding from the regional library is subject to a fiscal year budget appropriations from the Georgia Public Library System. This serves an adjustment to the annual budget from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, in the amount of $405,723.94. We're asking for approval on that.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Next is the agreement with the Board of Regents of University of Georgia for extension services. We would like to continue that contract with them in the amount of $138,987. Staff recommends approval of continuing this, the UGA extension services agreement.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. We have Fire and Emergency Services.
Good morning. This is a request to accept a donation for Women of the World. They would like to donate $500 for our fire safety and prevention program, and staff would recommend accepting that donation as budget amendment.
Yeah, second.
So moved. We have another committee, our insurance. Dr. Carney's going to come up and present that.
Come on, Jeff.
Basically, this is a response to the RFP we sent out for a healthcare broker. We had seven proposals come in. We had a committee of five or six people that are listed on your sheet, I believe. The head capital advisors was the top point getter out of the seven that, and I want to thank procurement in that committee. This was a ton of work that they did. Head capital advisors scored the highest, so we'd recommend they'll be our provider. They will be the agent of record for us, and we are recommending to go into an agreement with them June 1 of this year and terminate in June 30, 2023 with three one-year options with the right to cancel.
Mr. Head has been handling this for several years, so he's well familiar with our program, what we do and all of it, right?
Yeah, we didn't actually, we didn't have a broker per se for our entire account. He was the person servicing our account for many years. He was the one coming and explaining the benefits to our employees. But we did a lot of the broker services ourselves in-house. With the volatility of healthcare right now, we need somebody advocating with all the different insurance companies to help us through that process because we may end up with a different carrier based on some things that are happening in our market. I do want to just say a big thank you to Elizabeth McBurney, who has been doing this for years. You know, she has HR duties, but she has just done an amazing job with our benefits, and she has really done all the services that a broker would do, with the exception of those Wednesday meetings when they come in and explain the benefits and stuff. So she's done a great job. This is going to take a little bit off our plate, hopefully take a lot off our plate, to allow her to still be an advocate for the employees, but to have that go between. But yes, sir, to answer your question, he has been doing it for years. We were glad to see his proposal come in strong. We had some folks out of town with some strong proposals as well, but it's always good to see somebody that is familiar with the account, familiar with our community, present such a good proposal.
So he being the broker, if a different company comes up?
He'll still be the broker.
That call that, hey, this is where we need to go.
If we have to shop plans, he handles it. That may come into effect with United. United and University Hospital still haven't come to an agreement. 90% of our employees use University Hospital. So by the end of this year, that could be a major problem. So he's going to help us shop to make sure we take care of that. We can't keep our employees out on a limb.
I'm just glad we can spend money locally at the time we can.
I do know him, not whatever, but he does fantastic stuff.
He does good work.
Whatever he does, he just does good work. So it was, I'm glad to see he won. I'll make them up.
Second.
So moved. Thank you, sir. Any additional items? Driver's not even here, so that's a good sign.
He's actually on his way. He was running a little behind this morning. We have, he has several matters that he's dealing with for the county that are keeping him busy these days.
Okay. Chief, we have some status reports?
Yes, sir. I have the response summaries and our budget report, and I'd be glad to answer questions.
I have no questions.
Thanks for the informations. Chief, any, we have any commissioner or public comments?
Sir, will I raise my hand?
Are you a commissioner or are you public?
Put your public hat on, it's okay.
I just wanted to speak about the public for just a quick moment. In the last few weeks, we did our annual boot drive, and of course, it was a little quicker because I had to push last year until October. And it's always amazing to see how quickly folks donate and things. But this year was a little more challenging than last year, believe it or not, because we lost all but three locations. However, we raised over $63,000.
Oh, awesome.
And the way that I view that, and I'm going to keep viewing it that way, is that when somebody will walk up and just put a $100 bill in their hand, walk away and say thank you, I don't think there's a better way to demonstrate the trust that the community has in Columbia County as a government. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Everything you do.
I want to say, and I hate to get on this, but with all that's happening up at the late, this summer is gotten off to a bad start, but what you all are doing up there and trying to help in whatever ways that, appreciate it and I'm glad that we're.
Thank you.
Thank you all for that.
Thanks to you guys for hanging out there. No executive session? So we'll call adjournment, 8:40?
I'd like to call to order the Public Works and Engineering Services Committee for Tuesday, May the 25th. Having the invocation and pledge, we do still have three members present. Good, and you all are satisfied, I'd like.
Move to approve, sir.
Second.
Move. Mr. Johnson, are we?
Believe you're good with this agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Presentations, right into the page. Board, first time up, let's put it.
Turn your microphone on. Mr. Clayton, can you come up here and work with me?
I thought you was training me.
And we're going to need you to make a motion too, Bill.
All right. The first item is Jones Creek Forest Main Phase 2. We need some stone stabilization to provide us access to maintain a sewer line, and it's a change order for $6,000, and staff recommends approval of the change order.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Second item is we have a modification to old Louisville tank to pumps water, it pumps water to the city of Harlem, and we're adding chlorine injection there and mixing. Well, while we have their tank down, we felt it was a good idea to go ahead and do some tri-helamethane removal because the city of Harlem, the water on that end of the system is older, and we're having high tri-helamethane issues in the system, and it's causing issues within meeting regulations. So we're doing some aeration there. We've gone to several manufacturers, and the equipment to buy is over 200,000, just to purchase equipment, not including installation. So the engineer designed us a system that can get about 50% removal for $171,275, and staff recommends approval of the change order for a net adjusted amount of $147,448.
So that 50% removal, is that going to keep us where we need to be, or?
Yeah, it'll put us way below where we need to be.
Form of methane is flammable?
No.
No, okay.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
All right. The third item is we took bids for a Craftsman equipment trailer to haul one of our pieces of equipment, and the bids were over budget, and we got with Fleet Services, and we felt the best thing to do was reject the bids. So we recommend rejection of bid number 2021-017, bid 1414.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Fourth item is the Washington Road, the Flowing Wells Road, Forest Main. We were forced to go out on the road on three different roads, where they were Braddock, Fairfax, and Old Anderson Street. We're having to, because of stuff in the right-of-way, we're having to move out in the road, and we were going to be digging up and replacing six feet of road, and the road was already in pretty rough shape. So we got with Matt and Kyle and came up with a plan to resurface the entire road, and so we're sharing the change order for resurfacing the road with those guys for 288, 393, 84, and we're going to use the extension and renewal funds and Tia discretionary. So staff recommends approval of change order.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. I didn't see how those really, with my pictures and map here, how it really affected the Washington Road.
The name of the project was the Washington Road. We ran the water line down Washington Road, then turned and went up behind Flowing Wells Road.
Okay.
Just the name of the project, but it did go from the tanks at the top of Flowing Wells Road all the way down Washington.
Right, right. Knew that, but when I saw this name, what? Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Okay. I've also included just staff reports for budget.
We'll get to that in a minute.
Oh, we'll get that in a minute, okay. Never mind.
I think that winds you up. Good job.
That does.
Good job, sir. All right, we got a.
Might be a tough act to follow there.
Sure, he did a great job, but you've got it.
My first item is a public hearing on the proposed establishment of a streetlight district in Brigadier Landing Phase 2 in Eagle Creek. Staff received a petition from the residents for the installation of streetlights, and Georgia Power has submitted the cost, which you see in front of you. I guess at this time, we can open up the floor for a public hearing. Anybody would like to come forward?
Public hearing is open for the streetlight district. Anyone like to speak, come forward. Being done, we'll close the public hearing.
All right. Second item is Resolution 2123 and 2124, the same streetlight district. This requires two readings, so staff recommends approval of the first two readings for Resolution 2123 and 2124 to establish streetlight districts. Upon approval of the second reading, we'll authorize Georgia Power to proceed with installation.
Move to debate.
Second.
First reading.
Next item is a proposal for Georgia Power to provide safety lighting at Wrightsboro Road and Brigadier Landing. We received a request to evaluate the safety lighting at this intersection. We looked at the, our policy, and it met three of the six warrants. The costs are shown there in front of you. We recommend approval for Georgia Power to proposal, Georgia Powers' proposal to install the safety lights on the existing poles and build a county. It's one intersection over.
One, yes, right.
Yes, right.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Next item is to amend the Columbia County Radar permit for the Columbia County Sheriff's Office. This is the permit that we amend maybe once every one to two years. We received some feedback from the Sheriff's Department, and we also had some roads that were annexed out of the county, and we also had some new alignments, Gateway Boulevard being one. And we have this draft permit here that can send to Georgia DOT, and once Georgia DOT approves it, then at that time, it will go to the Sheriff's Department, and they will sign it, and then they'll send it off to Public Safety in hopes of having it certified. So the roads there being changed or added are in red. Package there. Staff recommends amending this radar permit.
Only question I had was Gateway Boulevard, 35 miles an hour?
Yeah.
It's going to be quite congested once it's built. Gateway Boulevard's through the Walmart, Applebee's, Arby's.
I guess I was thinking of the new section. I've been through it and.
Yeah, right now, you're right, it's open. Hopefully, it doesn't stay that way.
From Horizon all the way to Wrightsboro.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Next item is a contract with Midstate Construction and Striping for Striping Project B. This is a project that comes out of the budget, striping budget that Traffic Engineering has. This will be for striping, stopbar striping, RPMs, and signage for Bennett Road, Eubank Drive, Mulliken Road, North Bel Air Road, Oakley Perkle, and Parham. So this will, at the cost of $96,644.39, we are within budget. We will have still some money remaining after this, on that we have plans to do Flowing Wells Road, which needs to be done, unfortunately, prior to when we resurface it. It's pretty worn out now, and then some other miscellaneous areas, but.
Move to consent.
This paint will be normal yellow, or will it?
Yeah, we'll make sure the color's right this time.
I thought there weren't.
I think Matt got to pick out last year's color with the orange. Kyle.
Kyle didn't like it at all.
He'll correct that. Okay.
Yeah.
But it's good. It seemed like we had more bid on this than we had in the past. It was only one person that left here, so good to see.
All right. Next item is to adopt a countywide procedure for work zone and traffic control. Previously, traffic operations had a, just sort of a verbal, just traffic control policy. The meat of it is the notification, when to notify the county prior to a road closure, and our policy is currently 72 hours. And we looked into other local governments and Georgia DOT to see what their policy is, and everybody pretty much had a 48-hour policy, which makes sense to kind of keep the notification fresh, not to let, honestly, not to let folks to know too early in advance because they may make other plans and forget about it. So we would like to adopt this policy here. Staff recommends adopting this proposed procedure for work zone traffic control.
Was there a challenge before in 72 hours?
I wouldn't say a challenge. This formalizes everything, make sure that we have a policy. The board has stood up and said, this is what we're going to do, that now we've got some teeth behind our policy. We can see somebody that's violating our policy, we can now go after them. So we were getting notifications, sending to our notification, we were putting them out, and people forgot about them. It was three days ago when you told me this, now they're shutting my road down, I forgot. So a lot of them.
Move to consent.
Second.
Next item is a design services contract with Southern Civil Solutions for the 2021 stormwater rehabilitation projects. Locations are Hillbrook, Somerville West, State Coach Way, and Petersburg Station, and Columbia Industrial Boulevard, Erie Creek Industrial Park. We requested quotes from three different engineering firms, with Southern Civil Solutions being the lowest, most responsible quote, and we looked at their team of some subconsultants, and they have a good quality of team of folks that we're familiar with. This consists of basically some pipe that's lost the bottom of that, and they're corroded out, so they either need to be UV lined or completely replaced. So that study will help us determine what the scope is and the estimated construction cost. So staff recommends approving Southern Civil Solutions design proposal in the amount of $21,900.
How long have we? Is that, was that be holding up?
It works well. Mr. Zonner's back here. I think Mr. Zonner loves it. Saves him a lot of time, a lot of energy, gets done a lot faster, a lot cheaper than a dig and replace.
So the key here is identifying the need early on before the pipe is too far, is that?
That does help absolutely if you can get it before it's completely gone. It eventually comes to a point where you can't UV line, you've got to dig it up, which is one of the things on Columbia Industrial that we might not be able to line that project. First time we lined a pipe that I can remember was back in probably '08, '09. First one I remember us doing, it was a different type of liner. You pull it through and use pressurized steam to make it form, but this new UV is a lot faster, a lot easier to do.
As I look at the list, there's no conflict doing this with the repaving because some of these roads are going to get repaved, they won't.
That's the great part of that, this UV lining, is you don't dig up your road, you pull the liner through it.
It has no impact on the paving, okay. Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Next item is Resolution 21-20, which is an initial resolution for the abandonment of a portion of Parham Road. There's a proposed development that is at Parham Road and Gordon Highway, and the property owner, who is trying to sell to the developer, however, that there's a portion of right-of-way that is from a Georgia DOT project that was never abandoned. And so what this does is this allows us to start the process of abandonment. County doesn't pay anything, property owner bears all the cost. So with this resolution, it will be, you know, a two-week advertisement period, and at the following commission meeting, a report will be made on the public hearing, along with the second resolution proposing the abandonment of the right-of-way.
Proceed to debate.
Second.
It can, it doesn't have to.
Okay, that's my question.
On this, just so I'm clear, we notify the original property owner first, they have first option, or anybody that joins that has the same option, or help me understand this?
All right, Mr. Driver's here, so he might have to clarify me so I don't speak out of term, but based on state law, it depends on when the property was acquired. There's a timeframe on it. In 30 years, Chris, help me out, if it's within 30 years, we have to go back to the original parent parcel owner and offer them first. There's a process of, if that person exists, there's a process of tracking down the next owner. More than 30 years, it's a public bid.
But if the original property owner has sold the property, do you go to the guy or the person that bought the property?
Parent parcel, not the parent parcel owner.
Okay.
Within 30 years.
Okay, okay. Move to consent.
A second.
So moved.
Next item is another initial resolution for abandonment. This is Resolution 2126 for a portion of Evans Town Center Boulevard. Queensborough Bank has applied with Georgia DOT for an encroachment permit to realign Evans Town Center at Washington Road. They would like to improve the operation of that intersection. Currently, it's a right-in only, and so their proposed intersection would operate now as a right-in, right-out, and a left-in, nothing but a left-out. So far, Georgia Power seems to be on board. One of the things that they also require as a condition of it is for Queensborough to remove an existing driveway, which would eliminate a conflict point out there, and Queensborough agreed to do that. So that's handled under the Georgia DOT permit. So this is again, an initial resolution. There'll be a two-week advertisement period, a follow-up with the commission, or on the public hearing.
So the DOT permit will not allow a left-out?
Correct.
Change for folks to be going across.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Next item is an agreement with Georgia Department of Transportation for the county to acquire right-of-way in federal funds for the hard-iron management. to acquire right-of-way in federal funds for the Hardeman Manor Road widening project. So this is the last step that we need in order to get the funds authorized to begin right-of-way acquisition. We've cleared all the environmental hurdles. We secured the money through the arts. So this agreement will allow us to negotiate and have full control over the right-of-way or acquisition phase with District Office, Georgia DOT District Office oversight. So the, the funding there in front of you. Staff recommends approval of this agreement with Georgia.
This is a T-SLOSS project.
A blended project. So we started this project using MPO funds, sign, and we put it in T-SLOSS, public voted on and approved for the construction. So actually secured additional federal dollars to get the right-of-way underway prior to T-SLOSS dollars available to, a blended project.
Work, Steve.
Thank you. This gave us a two-year head start, so.
Second.
So move. Hundred-and-fifty parcels, we'll need that. That's a lot of work for Hardeman.
Um, next item, this is a developers' agreement with Bulldog Trucking and Grading and Evan Gray's Tree Service. Grimald Farm subdivision is, they're, these two gentlemen are co-developing Phase Two or Section Two, which is at the end of Grimald, Arthur Grimald Way. And we looked at the plans and we looked at the paving section out there on Arthur Grimald Way. It wasn't designed for these, addition of these lots here. So we looked at it and we determined that there was some work that needed to be done on the road, general oxidation and some deep patching. And we proposed to the developer that we would do that after they do construction. And then after that point, we would do a public-private partnership, for the most part, just split the surf, resurfacing. And that, so it would be a revenue to the L-MIG and then at the appropriate time, we would add that, this project to the L-MIG.
After the development of the Phase Two, Section Two.
That's correct.
Move to consent.
Second.
So move.
Next item is Resolution twenty-one twenty-five, which is the adoption of utility permitting fees. Currently, our utility permitting department reviews and inspects without charging any fees. It's worked for a little while, but we have noticed that over the past five years at least, worker, work within the utility, work within the public right-of-way has really gone up a lot and it's causing a lot of, um, it's, it's very busy work. It's, uh, staff is very inundated. And so we actually looked at the budget this year. Part of that was to, to get another position. In order to support that, it's very clear that we need to adopt fees. So looked at the ordinance. We worked with Mr. Driver and found that under section of the code sixty-six dash five that we can implement fees. So we came up with a, our operational cost and we looked at past permits and permanent, looked at other local governments, what they charged. We established a proposed, uh, we've come up with a proposed application fee and a permit fee and then non-compliance permit fee. So that's in the packet there. So staff recommends forwarding Resolution twenty-one twenty-five to implement charging utility permitting fees.
Who's gonna pay this normally?
It's mainly, um, there's mainly five to six people who are gonna pay it. AT&T, Comcast, Georgia Power, Southern Gas.
But the utilities will pay this? And any idea, easy guess on what the average fee would be?
I think we looked at, um, so a lot of them are very small. Like the permit fee is based on footage, so those are gonna be like about a hundred-and-fifty dollars or something. I think there were some that we looked at that were gonna be around twelve-hundred dollars. Some of the bigger jobs, thirty cents a foot.
But we've been, we've been looking at their plans and hearing you going over it and for free forever?
Yes, sir.
All private citizens have been paying for plan review fees?
That's correct, yep.
We actually are showing this and just, I'm not sure if we understand, we're showing this as a revenue in next year's budget to help balance that budget. If not, obviously if you don't approve it, we'll back that number out and general fund I have to support.
Which is in the budget.
I'm sorry. That's T-SLOSS money, that's right, I'm sorry, T-SLOSS money.
About a hundred-and-fifty thousand or one fifty, about one-fifty, one-thirty-five is somewhere in that area is what we're estimating we'll bring in revenue. But currently we're funding this entire department using T-SLOSS to.
It is, right. So these are projects you'll be able to do with that money.
Be able to expand, pave another mile of road by generating these revenues.
Yeah, I think it's about.
This is pretty common around the state.
It is. So we looked around the state, Mr. Exey looked at several of our benchmark counties, tried to land where we were conservative. But the first thing I asked them to do was tell me what it costs to run the department and tell me how much we did, work we did last year and then figure out what it would cost that way. And that's where he came to his numbers. And then he went back and looked at other counties and said, where are we at? Look, we were kind of median on it, so we weren't, we weren't too high. But at the same time, Mr. Johnson is tasked as getting our broadband ready designation. Blanchard is working with his group, trying to get a, uh, ordinance put in place to get us broadband ready. Exey's working with utility permitting fees. They meld, they, they merged together to create a, an ordinance that says that Columbia County is ready for you to come in their county. So parts of one piece of.
But this.
It was one half of it. Mr. Blanchard's working the other half of it.
Fate or consent? The fee?
The fee.
It's a good debate.
Move to debate.
Second.
Good debate.
Last item is a contract with Reese Construction for the Savannah Rapids Pavilion Upper Parking Lot Expansion. This was a project that we had put out to bid at least two years ago. And it came in pretty much over budget, I mean, by quite a bit. So we just took a pause for a minute and kind of got our ducks in a row and we took it back off the shelf and decided it's time to get it back out to bid. But this time, obviously, we needed to do changes to the design and get it back within budget. So we veed it and, um, uh, we sent it back out. And so this bid came in at eight-hundred thousand, eight-hundred thirty-six thousand, nine-hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty, and seventy-eight cents, which about a two-hundred thousand now under budget. So it was a big swing. So we do, it is under budget. So with some of the money that we have left in the budget, we will spend that on utilities. It will be directly billed by the utility, utility companies to cover those costs. So this is for, the information you see there before you, that's the scope of the work. And staff recommends approval to enter into the contract with Reese Construction in the amount of eight-hundred thirty-six thousand, nine-hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Move to consent.
Where this is, when you come in Savannah Rapids, this is to the left-hand.
That's correct.
Hundred-plus parking places.
Yeah, going from about thirty-five to about a hundred and three.
Look of folks are thinking when they put up there, just.
Landscape areas between the parking stalls. So it's kind of keeping with the feel of Savannah Rapids, it's just about a sea of asphalt.
Single matters.
Move to merits.
Move to merits.
Jensen Hall.
Um, yeah, I've included the year-to-date budget, water and sewer, uh, project reports and, and the work, work reports for your review. I'd answer any questions if you have.
When are we starting the UV construction?
Um, August first is the start on the before date. They've already started submitting, uh, hitting shop drawings for the engineer to review, going through that and getting things ordered because lead times are so long right now.
Estimated time to completion is?
Uh, was about eighteen to twenty-one months.
Uh, any commissioner or public comment? Ready? Executive session items?
Recommend we move them on to the full board.
Or adjourned at nineteen?
Thank you, man.
Key.
So everybody in the county will get something as a result of this. What it did for us, which is really amazing, and kudos to Matt and Glenn, Jane Abeth in my office, and Leanne, and really all of our division directors as well, working really, really hard on this. Because what we found, once we put all these numbers in, was it flowed very well. We took all the compression out. There is no compression in our salary matrix. So I tell you all that to tell you that we had set aside a placeholder of about a half a million dollars to do what we needed to do in the general fund. But you see now the proposals to the salary matrix are at one point five nine nine million dollars. That number's going to change just a little bit because we have some new hires that are going to be coming on. We have people that are retiring, and some of those people are... We had to take a snapshot in time to work on this because we were working on individual salaries, thirteen hundred people's individual salaries in this big roll-up sheet. So some of those people have already retired. So this number is a place marker. It is going to change a bit. And then you see the proposed changes to the sheriff's office salaries. What this is going to do is it's going to establish a fifteen dollar floor for our employees. And some of our employees are getting significant raises. There are employees that are getting five and six thousand dollar raises that really need that.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Because I can't focus because my mind's running.
No, go ahead.
Question.
Go ahead.
The last several years, end of the year, we have opted to give a two percent.
Yep.
Cost of living, and then a two percent merit.
Yep.
Chris, however you want.
It's a merit raise. If you qualify for the merit raise, it's a one-time merit raise.
Okay, but it's two percent, and most folks got that.
Correct.
By doing that for the last however many years, four, five, have we shot ourselves in the foot? Where salaries... I think people have really come to appreciate.
Yes, sir.
I really do, and I think they want them, they need them, and they count on them.
Yes, sir.
But it's... You get it, you spend it.
There, well, he's moving people up as he can, but he actually has vacancies in his higher ranks that he is choosing not to fill to not pull a deputy off the road. So it's kind of spread out without the, throughout the organization. So there are some supervisors that are, or promotions that are on hold waiting to backfill positions.
So if we could, if we can get entry level, come back and...
Yes, sir. Yes. And the biggest problem is, is he's just not getting enough applications for entry level. And I forgot the number he gave me the other day, but after he went through his entire process, he only had just a handful of applicants to fill those 30 positions. I know the chief was in a similar situation. How many applicants do we have currently? So we have less than 10 applicants for five openings, and that number's fluctuating. So we, we took your challenge to work on the salary matrix. Our entry level was $12 an hour, and we got that number up to 13 and some change. But as we looked at that, we found out that the salary matrix still was not performing the way we needed it to. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we, when we went from the, the eight or nine dollar an hour entry that we had at 12, we compressed the low end of the salary scale and left everything else the way that it was. So there was only a, like a 1% difference between those first maybe five or six grades. So there was a lot of cleanup that needed to be done. But with everything that's going on with the other people that are hiring in our community, I know we talk a lot about Amazon. We don't base everything we do on Amazon, but they're about to have a huge hiring event in Columbia County. We're afraid we're going to lose some employees, some of our, our lower paid employees to places like that. So we were challenged to get the salary matrix to $15 an hour as a minimum salary. To do that, it, it affected, obviously, the entire county. We have over 1,300 employees that are spread out from the lowest pay grade to the highest pay grade, and we had to find a way that we could be fair and competitive at the same time, then also be good stewards of taxpayers' money, because that's really what it boils down to. And to do it within the amount of money that we had, because we knew that a tax increase was not on the table. As a matter of fact, we needed to work something out where, if possible, we could do this and even roll back taxes. Because that's always been the challenge that I've gotten from this board, was to keep taxes the same or reduce taxes where you can. So we worked our way through that process, and we have now come up with a new salary matrix that we're going to ask you to approve as part of the budget. It does give significant raises to our low end. I will say that this plan is very much what we were working with the sheriff on. So the sheriff actually came back with a plan that raised his starting salary, but to avoid compression, he went in and gave longevity raises to people with, throughout the organization. As a constitutional officer, the sheriff has the ability to be able to allocate the money any way he sees fit. So he could have done it that way, but instead, the sheriff elected to work with us and, and try to come up with a plan that we could implement together, which we very much appreciate him doing that. And as a result of that, we were able to take the sheriff's plan and apply it to the entire county. So the longevity increases are there. And then what we did, kind of a third step, was we looked at it, okay, if somebody doesn't get moved up to the new entry level, or they're already making more than new entry level, and if longevity doesn't get them where they need to be, historically, this board has done a 2% cost of living raise in January for our employees. So since there's so much going on, I didn't want to present a budget to you now with all these new salaries and then come back in January and have you compound that with an additional 2%. So what we said was, we will look at it, everybody that's not getting a bump here, they will get that minimum of 2%. So we kind of looked at three scenarios. What's the new starting salary for somebody's position? If that didn't apply, or if that's not enough, or didn't give them where they need to be, then what does longevity look like using the sheriff's plan? And then we applied that. And then beyond that, we said, okay, if they didn't get either one of these, then let's look at a 2% raise for these folks. So everybody in the county will get something as a result of this. What it, what it did for us, which is really amazing, and kudos to Matt and Glenn, Jane Abeth in my office, and, and Leanne, and really all of our division directors as well, working really, really hard on this, because what we found, once we put all these numbers in, was it flowed very well. We took all the compression out. There is no compression in our, in our salary matrix. So I tell you all that to tell you that we had set aside a placeholder of about a half a million dollars to, to, to do what we needed to do in the general fund. But you see now the proposals to the salary matrix are at 1.599 million dollars. That number's going to change just a little bit, because we have some new hires that are going to be coming on. We have people that are retiring, and some of those people are, we, we had to take a snapshot in time to work on this, because we were working on individual salaries, 1,300 people's individual salaries in this big roll-up sheet. So some of those people have already retired. So this number is a place marker. It is going to change a bit. And then you see the proposed changes to the sheriff's office salaries. What this is going to do is it's going to establish a $15 floor for our employees. And some of our employees are getting significant raises. They're employees that are getting five and $6,000 raises that, that really, that really need that.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Because I can't focus because my mind's running.
No, go ahead.
Question.
Go ahead.
The last several years, end of the year, we have opted to give a 2%
Yep.
Cost of living, and then a 2% merit.
Yep.
Chris, however you want.
It's a merit raise. If you, if you qualify for the merit raise, it's a one-time merit raise.
Okay, but it's, it's 2%, and most folks got that.
Correct.
By doing that for the last however many years, four, five, have we shot ourselves in the foot where salaries? I think people have really come to appreciate
Yes, sir.
I, I really do, and I think they, they want them, they need them, and they count on them.
Yes, sir.
But it, it's, you get it, you spend it, and it's gone.
Right.
You're not seeing it as an ongoing thing. And after a couple of years, that probably makes our entry level look a little bit lower than it would have been
Right.
if we'd have just, you know, just went ahead and give them the 4% rather than two and two. So are we shooting ourselves in the foot there?
Yep.
Because
So I think, I think
I really don't think people want to see that go away. You can't have it both ways.
Well, I, I think, I think what you've seen is, is you could have gone the route of, instead of doing a two and two, doing a four. But we would have carried that additional salary burden for all those years, because it compounds every year, right? So we made the, we made the intentional decision to split that out, so we could look at that one-time merit as a, we could segregate that money to see how well we were performing, to make sure that we had the money to be able to cover that. All right, so that being said, if you don't go that route of doing the 4% every year, then you find yourself lagging behind the benchmark counties, which we were, and we find ourselves in situations where we've got to do something like this. So what this is doing, I think, is right sizing us. Instead of carrying that burden for those many years, we've waited those many years, we've waited it out, and, and now we're going to right-size our salary matrix and kind of get it to where it probably would have been if we'd have done 4% every year. But we're in a position financially to be able to do it, and we didn't burden ourselves over that period of time. In regards to the merit payments, I would think that, that right sizing our salary matrix is the right thing to do. Merit is, in my mind, is a different thing. So that we're rewarding our employees for their, this, this is, we're paying them a fair salary, a fair wage for a fair day's work. Merit is, if you've gone above and beyond, and you've got, and you've done a really good job this year, then we give you that 2%. We, we have that number in the budget, Gary. I don't think we're trying to take it away from them, but we, we are looking to do that.
Well, you know, if it's, if every three or four years, you've got to come back and do a big, I'm, I'm concerned that, that, that that could be an issue long-term or whatever, every three or four years, and then you, you catch back up, but then as you go, you, you're losing folks or they're not coming because of what we're talking about, entry level. So I was just, you know.
It's a great point.
Long-term.
It's a great, historically, our salaries have been lower than our benchmark counties. We've been very conservative with our salaries. We've been very conservatives with our sheriff's deputies and our firefighters, and people come to work here because it's a great place to work, and it's a good atmosphere. It's not always the best pay. But who would have known that, you know, people could sit home these days and make $16 an hour, whatever that number is, you know, that there's, we, we never would have known that, you know, a couple of years ago. But I think, I think what we have to do is, is we have to look at our budget. We do this. We look at our budget every single year, and we look at our revenues every year and our expenditures, and we start at the bottom. We work our way up. We truly zero-based budget in Columbia County. So it's not what you had last year plus 2% or 5% or whatever the number is. It's what do you need this year, starting at zero, and what does that number get us to? And because we've done that, we've been able to keep our, we've been able to keep our budgets loaded, but still be able to get everything that we need. And quite frankly, this year, financially, we're in a position to be able to right-size this budget. If you'd asked me to do this a year ago with COVID looming, I probably would have been a little apprehensive to do that. I think it was, probably wouldn't have been the best time, and I don't think this board would have gone for that. But where we are financially today, when you look at these numbers and you see where we are, even right sizing this, we're still going to put a significant number of our general fund budget in TAVT, which, for special projects, and we are conservatively estimate, estimating the tax digest coming in, and we have a, a, a 3% number on that digest right now. I anticipate it to come in higher than that. And if it does, we're not going to come back to you and ask you for more money or do any, we're, we're doing the right thing with the budget. What I think at that point that this board will have to do is look at the possibility of reducing taxes if we need to get to that point. And I know that's something that we've been challenged with. So if we can get to the point where we can right-size these budgets, still give our employees the merit raises that they deserve for working hard, and reduce taxes, which may be the strategy this year when, looking at our digest when it comes back in, I think it tells a pretty good story.
It, it does, and, and I'm not complaining at all. I think, again, I think, I think employees greatly, greatly appreciate that at the time of, when we're able to do it or have done it in the last few years, and I think it means a lot to them.
Yes, sir.
And I hope we can continue to do something like that. But I was, I was just trying to, to balance it out, you know.
Well, fortunately, it doesn't affect the salary matrix. So the matrix will be the matrix. It'll still remain the same as, as what it is. And if we do a cost of living next year, then that'll be for the employees that are here, but the new employees will start at the bottom salary or whatever their salary is. But then the merit will be just that. But, but I appreciate you saying that, because I think it means a lot to our employees. I think they do depend on that now. We've kind of taught them to be patient instead of, you know, we're not, maybe we're not going to pay you as much as one of our neighboring counties would pay you, but we are going to try to take care of you at the end of the year. And when we get to a situation like this where we can do something financially, we make a pretty significant impact. This is, some of these raises are life-changing for our employees.
And I'm trying to understand them, actually, and I was a proponent of getting up to the $15 an hour number. I look at some of the contract numbers, and they just don't seem to make sense to me.
Yep. So let me explain the contract numbers on the, on the salary matrix. Basically, the contract numbers are entry level on the contracts where they, where they currently are today. So for example, nobody is, nobody's getting significant huge raises on these contract numbers. These are basically, I'm trying to go back and look at like the contracts. Contract three, for example, is pretty close to where it was in the other one.
Is that like a 22% raise?
At the number. But nobody, none of those people are getting, those would just be for entry people coming forward, Mr. Chairman. Nobody, nobody in the county that's here already, for example, division directors are contract fours, and their new number is 122. If you remember, this board took action a couple of years ago to make their salary 120. So every, even though the, we, what we were doing was, we were, we were operating outside of a matrix, and we were doing the same thing with the sheriff's office. We were operating outside of our salary matrix. This right sizes the salary matrix. Matt, do you want to add something to that?
I've got the actual numbers pulled up here. We have one contract three employee in the whole county, and that employee will only get a $2,000 raise. So it's not a 20% raise
Right.
at all, because they're so far above entry level already. They've been here 35 years.
Same thing with the contract fours for the division directors. All of them are making pretty much that money.
So it's new folks coming in, and Mr. Gordon and myself had a conversation this morning about somebody, a, a position that we may need to fill, but we can't fill that position, and we went through this not long ago in a couple of different departments. We, they, they were out there for a year, and we couldn't fill them because of private sector right now is so good, and can't get a quality person for that.
Our, our contract fours.
Get quality people.
Our contract four positions, which are our director levels, highest one I see is $3,800, so that's still less than a
This is a range. This is not
That's correct.
We don't have somebody making 80 that's going to 100, basically.
No.
Correct.
No.
But that's what I read when I saw it. That's what I was trying to
Now, what you do have is you have a situation where somebody that's making 80 today, the contract three, if we hire a contract three, the new contract three will come in at 98
So then
under this new salary matrix.
They're at the top of the band, then.
No, it's not. I'm sorry. Don't, don't look, no, this is a current salary, proposed salary. These are entry levels. So the entry level on contract three is not a band. This is not, you're not looking at the, the band. You're looking at the entry level. So a contract three currently is $8,180, and the new contract three would be 98,150. But this is a great example. A contract three example of that would be an engineer that we're bringing in to be our stormwater manager or whatever. Who do we have in that contract three now?
Our deputy fire chief.
Deputy fire chief is the current one. So again, you'd hire a deputy fire chief if you brought one in today. Instead of bringing that person in at 80, you'd bring him in at 98. But your division director is already 120, so the number two position in, in that position would be at 80 if we didn't make those adjustments. There's been a tremendous, and I, and I want y'all to ask questions, because you have to be comfortable with this.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm
I know you will.
Got a lot of
I know you will. And I know this is what you do. There's been a tremendous amount of thought that has gone into this salary matrix, and you don't have people
Asking questions. They may be dumb to people.
No.
We don't have a problem asking.
No, you should. You should. At the end of the day, you're responsible for this. You have to raise your hand, and you're accountable to the taxpayers. And we understand that. So you need to ask all the questions you want to ask about the salary matrix, or anything.
Mr. Johnson, public safety is so important to our people. It's our culture. I'm looking at the proposed changes to sheriff's office salaries.
Yes.
Is that a net increase in the sheriff's office salary?
That is a net increase, all right, a net increase ongoing, and that does, again, that gets our sheriff's deputies' starting salary up to, I believe it's $20 an hour, is what a deputy's going to start at now. That's a stark contrast to the 1601 that it used.
Which pushes up basically 40 grand a year, starting out.
Correct. And that's, that's in the academy. When they go to deputy one, they go to another salary grade, so they get a raise. When they stay with us and they go to deputy two, or they move up to investigator, they get us, they get an increase. So, you know, we can grow with them and hopefully keep those people here. But again, it's, it's just getting them off the street. And, you know, I believe the sheriff mentioned this in your, in one of our budget meetings, but right now, he's having a hard time. It's one thing if you say, I'm going to hire a deputy out of high school and put that deputy through the academy. But what about if you're trying to get a really good five-year deputy from a neighboring county? Right now, we don't even compete. They're not going to come anywhere, they're not going to come near us, because they're making more after being five years in another department than we can start them at. We can't, we're not even close. Now we will be. We will be close and competitive.
All right, thank you, sir.
Does this take into credit in account the benefit package or rate?
These are, these are straight salaries, but one thing to consider, we only consider 37% incre, 37% on, on new hires. So the ongoing benefits of current employees are not that high. But no, that, these are, these are straight salaries. We have accounted for benefits, but these are straight salaries.
So this number is increased by what percentage? 20%.
It's actually about 17, but I think we use 20 to round it off. Yep. For budget purposes, we use 20%.
Go back to law enforcement. I know we've discussed it's important that our compensation is not only competitive, but come as close as we can to leading the market.
Right.
This get us there?
This will get us there. This, this, this will, this will get Columbia County a, as, as a desirable place to come to work.
Investing in law enforcement is the top priority of this board.
Yes, sir. I understand. I understand that. And you know, I, I think, I think that's really important. When we started looking at this, we actually came forward with a plan first. This grew, if you remember. The sheriff had a plan to do what, what you see before you here today. Actually, we, we grew it a little bit more than even the sheriff had. But he came forward with this plan, but we thought, well, if we do that for the sheriff's office, what about the fire department? Do we need to do it for the fire department, the public safety people there? So we started looking at the fire department. And then we said, well, what about our code enforcement officers? And it just kept going and going and going until we said, Kent, is there any way we can apply this countywide? And we were able to do that. But it absolutely started with public safety.
But this is, it's a good work session, and
Yes, sir.
I do think that, I mean, I'm going to have more questions as we go forward, just to make sure that I understand.
Absolutely. And we can take those individually. Obviously, we have some time before we approve the budget. So as you have questions, if you'll come
What is the date again on that?
The 14th, uh, 15th, 15th of June. Everything else is pretty much still the same on that sheet that you saw before. If there's any other questions on the summary, I'll be glad to answer those.
Talked about, contrary, just examples of who is contract three, four, five, and six.
Yes.
Contract three, engineers, deputy fire chiefs, four being division directors. Who falls into, or what positions fall into contract five and six?
Contract five? I believe the only contract fives we have are our deputy county managers. And I think I'm the only contract six in the county. And again, we're all making above, currently making above the minimum entry that you have here on this.
You know, I just like time to digest it all.
Yeah, you need, yeah, of course, of course. That being said, I'll, I'll move on. We can certainly come back if there are other questions. We'll move past the salary matrix and let you have time to digest that. The next item that you have there in your, in your budget package is just an update on those positions. These are all the new positions that we've asked for in the county. Just want to bring your attention to the PAC at the bottom. There, there are a couple of changes there. We found that, that Mr. Jamison is in desperate need of a box office manager and a technical director, now that we've had a couple of things over there at the PAC. We see that. So we've gone through and adjusted, adjusted his request, backed off of some of the custodians, and, and now we're going to give him a, an administrative person, a, I believe it's two custodians, if I'm not mistaken.
Is that enough to take care of the facility? Because this is a beautiful facility, and we need to stay on top of it.
So, so we're, this custodian is only for dated, somebody to be there all the time when the building's open, doing day-to-day stuff. We have it budgeted where we're actually going to bring in a cleaning service after every event and have the cleaning service deep-clean the entire facility to get it ready for the next event. There's no way one custodian, this person will actually be there to make sure that there's tissue in the restrooms, if there's a overflow, if there's a spill, you know, those sort of things. But we're, we're going to, we, we built it into the budget to contract with a third party to come clean.
How much of a change is this from when we started on the PAC, in terms of the staff?
We are adding two positions, the technical director and the box office manager. He asked for those originally in the budget process. I removed those from the budget before I presented it to you. But now, upon further consideration and talking with our partners at Nederlander and Ticketmaster, I'm seeing that these positions are needed. We're not changing the amount of money that we're giving the PAC. So we're still giving them that same, I'm going to call it a loan, of $400,000 to get them through this next year. They will pay the general fund back that money plus the 300 they got last year when they are able to do that. But they're already starting to show revenue. He's already making revenue in that facility. So I feel like, I, I feel comfortable now recommending these positions be filled. But again, we're not changing the number. You're only approving the positions.
Have enough work to justify full-time technical?
Yeah, that was something that we found the other day. If we don't do that, then we're going to have, I believe Matt's going to probably be doing most of that himself. When we say full-time technical person, for example, when we opened the PAC, we found out a few hours before the event that we had problems with the lighting and problems with the video. Matt was scurrying around trying to fix all those things. It could be because it was new, it could, but, but things happen, and, and riggings on set happens and those sort of things. And we start getting Broadway shows, and here's no way Matt's going to be able to do it.
Can't drop the ball on a couple of those. That would, that'd be mud on your face you'd never wipe off.
Right, right. So, yeah, we, we feel like, again, we're being conservative about this, but we just feel like this is the bare-bones staff of what they're going to have to have to be able to operate this facility. All of the other new positions you see there, you have seen before. These are the requests that we worked through in our, one of our very first work sessions. So you've seen those before. But if you have any additional questions about those, I'll certainly be glad to answer those. The next item in your package is an item that the chairman asked for, and I believe all of you will benefit from. You have, in your last budget package, a breakdown of all of our capital expenses, everything that we were putting in the budget to buy as far as vehicles and, and really all capital equipment. Chairman Duncan came back and asked for a breakdown by department and by fund of, of the vehicles and the heavy equipment that we were placing in the budget, and also wanted to know if it was a new vehicle or a piece of equipment, or if it was a replacement. So we put that in your package as well. Most of what you see, or probably half of what you see is replacements. But there are some new things. But the new stuff that you see, there may be one or two, and I'll be glad to go through them and answer any questions, but there, for the most part, everything you see that's new has to do with the fact that we're adding a new crew that needs equipment, that needs a vehicle to drive or whatever. So the, the equipment that you see here is in direct correlation to the new positions. For example, the board asked us to really look at getting another grass-cutting crew, because it, we, we need that. Our county's growing, our right-of-ways are growing. So we have a grass-cutting crew in there. But when you put that grass-cutting crew But when you put that grass-cutting crew in there, you end up with a couple of trucks and a trailer, and, and two tractors and a couple of mowers, and a gator that follows behind with a weed eater guy. So that's fully staffing that entire crew. So when you see those new things in there, a lot of those new things are, uh, because of new positions. But again, this is, you can digest this, I'll answer any questions you have now. But you may want to look over this list and compare it to your old list. Um, but if there's any questions about anything under, under the, uh, equipment, please let me know.
Yeah, and I'll, I need time to go through this as well.
Understand. Okay. The next two things that you have are just the, uh, job descriptions for the technical director that we talked about, uh, and the box office manager that we talked about. Uh, these are job descriptions that will have to be approved, uh, by you, and the positions will have to be approved as part of the budget for us to be able to fill those. They just wanted you to see those job descriptions there.
Can we get these, assume these are in Excel or something, the, excuse me, the.
Yes, it is in Excel.
Email those to the board?
Yes, yes, we will.
Be easier to ask questions.
Don't do paper anymore.
Well, no, I like, no, I'm old-school, I like paper.
Yeah.
But to ask questions, I'd rather have it in a document where I can list this, than I'll respond to everybody.
Absolutely, yep, I'll send that out to the board today. Uh, and then the last thing you have is the advancement ladder, uh, for building standards and the fire marshal's office. Again, this is one of those things, we have this in multiple departments, Ward utility has it. Uh, we have it in code enforcement. It's much like it is in the sheriff's office, where they move from deputy to deputy 1. Uh, but our building standards folks, um, as they get their certifications, what we have found is if we don't compensate them or move them up a grade when they get these certifications, then our local builders seem to steal them from us. And they will pay them a lot more money, because they have all these really nice certifications that we pay for.
Yeah, but our process in certifications is, we pay for a certification, you have to pay it back. If you, you can't get certified and then leave.
It's, it's, it's a year. So if you, if you, if you leave, but, but that's, again, if you have somebody that, that, some of these certifications you can knock out. Maybe you can do three of them in a year, and then you stay a year. But then you're making $20 an hour here, and somebody's going to pay you $30 an hour with those three certifications. Among other people, yep. So this career ladder, this advancement ladder, you have approved this in other departments. Um, this is just a cleanup that we needed to get the board approval. It will be part of the overall budget, but, uh, this will be an approval as well. But again.
This is tied to the salary structure?
Uh, yes, it is tied to this, it is tied to the salary structure, yes, yep. Uh, and then last but not least, I think I need to, to, to point this out to you. As we look through the, the salary structure and change that, uh, we had a lot of promotions and reclassifications that we, that you, we, you saw before. We have gone through, and a lot of those promotions and reclassifications are not going to be necessary now uh, because of the change in the salary matrix, right? The salary matrix is going to do what we needed it to do. Uh, so you're not going to have people that are going to be double-dipping. For example, nobody's going to get, uh, a raise here on the salary matrix up to this new thing, and then get a promotion on top of that raise. We've merged all that together, so you don't have people getting two different raises. It's a lot to digest. I mean, we obviously are working with $250 million in budgets, when you're looking at all the budgets, and when you're getting down into the weeds of $15 an hour and $250 million, that's a pretty far departure. Uh, but it's necessary. It's necessary for you to have all the information. We try to give you everything we have, uh, try to be very transparent in this process. Um, but I'm very proud to report to you that we do have a balanced budget that we're prepared to present to you with all these changes in there. And even with the changes we have, we still have additional funding we're going to be able to put into our, uh, special projects fund. Uh, and I do believe we have conservatively estimated our revenues. So when those numbers come back, if they come back as positive as I think they are, uh, when you set the miller's rate in August, I think we'll be looking at a possibility to do something there.
I'm looking forward to a massive reduction.
I understand, I understand. It's really a good story.
Don't quote me on that, Joe.
Yeah. It, it, it's a good story to tell. It's a lot of people like to be in the position of Columbia County. I think a lot of credit goes to this board and boards before you. Uh, the staff works really hard. Um, I, I don't, I don't think you'll find anybody else in, in the state of Georgia that is in the, in the poss, in the process of adopting a budget with this big salary changes to be, uh, some of the better compensated, not the best, but the better compensated employees, while at the same time talking about a miller's rate reduction.
Any other questions from the board? Yeah, if you could email the package out there.
We'll email it, yep, yep, you'll have it shortly.
Tell you what you, what we're doing here, and this is, this, people, uh, that are in the service industry or, um, restaurant or whatever, it, it, uh, really going to have to make them look at their game like we're having to look at ours. So it's going, it's going to be, it's going to be a, a big challenge for, for everybody in the, in the business community and how they react. But it's already here.
It is already happening.
We're already dealing with it, you know. How you, uh, hire employees and whatever, but that are on the middle to lower spectrum, it, it. Challenge for some of those guys.
There's no need for a federal minimum wage increase, it's already happening.
This is part of inflation that we're seeing.
Absolutely, screaming inflation. Anything else? I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 10:05.